Hi, I'm J R Charles, Customer Success Manager for Size Up. While we know that any business of any size in any industry can benefit from Size Up, I want to take just a few short minutes to walk you through a use case for a local business.
Can you pause that for a second so we can get him on a bigger screen?
I wanted to also say Mr. Charles, our representative and the President CEO is on a Zoom to talk about if you have any questions after the video.
Okay, and who is this gentleman?
Mr. J R Charles, our representative.
So.
It's a pre-planned, it's a pre-recorded video.
I understand that, but can we put on a bigger screen?
Uh, okay.
Oh, okay, alrighty.
Hi, I'm J R Charles, Customer Success Manager for Size Up. While we know that any business of any size in any industry can benefit from Size Up, I want to take just a few short minutes to walk you through a use case for a local business that can really benefit from Size Up's data. Small businesses traditionally don't have access to this type of data. This is usually reserved for Starbucks, McDonald's, Walmart, and larger corporations. But let's look at an example of a small coffee shop that could really benefit from this type of information. Now, I've prefilled out information in the interest of time, but the results will be the same. Let's take a look at a coffee shop that's making about $2 million. We can see that's a little above average for a typical coffee shop in Fort Lauderdale, but not completely out of bounds. The map will show us the darker areas where coffee shops make between 1.8 to $2 million, and that's what Size Up's going to give you, specific information about your specific business. Size Up will also give you a trend line of businesses that are opening up here across the nation, state, and metro area. We can even see salaries here, as well as specific salaries for specific positions, here in this case, hosts, cooks, and food servers. We can also look at the number of employees that a business has. This coffee shop has high revenue, but it's also a big coffee shop. We can see that there are nearly twice as many people at this coffee shop than the regional ones. We can all agree that 20 people is a small business, but this coffee shop is larger than a typical coffee shop in the city. That's going to result in a cost-effectiveness calculation that Size Up provides to you. This isn't generic. This is about a specific coffee shop that has higher-than-average revenue with more employees at a higher salary. We can also see here information such as revenue per capita, local retention, healthcare costs, workers' comp information that would normally be hidden from a small business owner. We can also see that there are open hours here. In this case, we plan to be open 55 hours a week, but we can see regionally that coffee shops are open more like 77 or even 88 hours in a week. This next chart will show you here what days they're open and what hours they're open. This is where Size Up gives data that is normally hidden. It makes the invisible obvious. Our next module is the competition tool. This tool isn't just about showing where your competition is located, it can also be used for prospecting. So I'm going to go ahead and click Customers here, and I'm going to say that we're going to target attorneys. Our coffee shop is going to open up a catering service, and we're going to target this business sector. And what you're going to see is that we're actually using this tool to start prospecting across different types of targeted industries. And we can even click inside the map and see the contact information of these different attorneys, if we have a way to reach out to them. We can also look at supply chain. We may not even be aware roasted coffee is sold, but we can click inside this tool and see coffee roasting wholesale, and now we can contact coffee roasters to get locally roasted coffee in our area. Size Up also has an advertising model so that businesses can understand the exact type of customer they should target and deploy their advertising dollars effectively. It can filter by distance, household income, expenditures, or even age, along with other filtering agents that allow them to target the exact customer they're looking for. And lastly, we have a demographics module. So if we, as a coffee shop, wanted to target specific age groups, say, young adults who are more prone to drink coffee on their way to work, we can turn on this data point and see here at the block level where those young people live, and we can target them with special promotions or targeted advertising. Size Up has another product that will actually help business owners learn about specific topics, Small Business Advisor. As you can see, we've plotted out topics according to a business's life cycle, like planning, starting, managing, or growing your business. We can also enter specific topics. So if I want to learn about advertising, and I click this field here, a section will pop up now that has a curated video, in this case, created by Size Up, verbiage, and subtopics related to this subject. Inside, there are special icons with the Size Up logo, and when clicked, it'll drop down an interactive tool. In this case, it's the demographic tool. And like before, we can now plot and identify targeted areas where we want to do our advertising, in this case, here with young adults. And so this is how Small Business Advisor can provide you with the information that will help you understand your topic of interest. Our next tool is the Shop Local tool. This tool provides a list of businesses that are unique and specific to your local market. There are no national chains in this list, just businesses that are owned and operated by local residents. If you click on any of these entries, it'll provide you with a list of information of how to get in touch or visit that local business. And lastly, Pulse is a snapshot of a specific business sector. This information is similar to Small Business Insights, but without a need to plug in your data. You can see here that it's a good reference tool if you want to research a specific business sector. When you put it all together, Size Up is an information suite that provides knowledge and insights to small business owners, and they can easily access this knowledge to find answers to the questions that are most pertinent to their success. Thank you very much.
So, Daphne, how does someone access this? Tell us how that works.
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. So we have.
Isn't that what you told me to ask?
So what we've done is we have the Size Up tool currently on our public affairs website, so anybody can access it in our Resources tab. We're also going to be doing a comprehensive outreach program through our social media, through newsletters with y'all on the commission, the HOAs, just the community in general, and we'll be having some Size Up technical assistance workshops with those who are interested in using it.
Mayor, the other day I got a chance to talk to the Size Up group, which was great. It's, and Daphne, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, all industries are invited, right? I mean, is that?
Correct.
It's.
It's all industries, entrepreneurs, existing businesses, businesses that want to grow. We want to make sure that we are, you know, committed to the priority of the commission to make this an economic hub for those investors who are coming in, as well as the entrepreneurs who are here.
So what is the cost to the city for this?
So we had paid an initial cost of $12,488. Annually, it would be $9,488.
And does, is there a subscriber fee to anyone who uses it? Is there other advertising opportunities on the site? How does that work?
No, so there is no cost whatsoever to the public, no cost to anybody who is using it. We, as a city, absorb all the costs for advertising. I don't believe there is an ability to advertise, but I can let J R, who is on the Zoom, answer that question. J R?
And hi, my name's Mario Uvalde, and I'm happy to answer that question. So we have within the tool a module that can support, let's call it sponsorship, but you can actually add logos, text, links to any of your other partners if there's a specific tool that is of interest to your partners. So yes, that capability exists.
Okay, does anyone from the commission have any questions? Okay, there being none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Public, this is for you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Business Two. It's a presentation regarding Fortify Lauderdale. Two-year anniversary tomorrow. Actually, it was April 13th, but it was a Wednesday, so it was yesterday and tomorrow.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner. My name is Abby Karam. I'm the interim Public Works Director. So we're coming to you this afternoon in the continuation of series of presentation that we've done to the commission, starting back in 2023. We came in in September 2023, we did a presentation. We came back October 1st in 2024. We did a presentation, and now in 2025, we're coming back for an update. Clearly, the 2023 was as a result of the big event on April 13, 2023 that changed a whole lot of dynamic in the program. So the intent of today's presentation really is to present the commission, what we have, and to present a proposed methodology for ranking and rating the 17 neighborhoods remaining in the Phase Two program. I'd like to mention that since the initial conception of the program, we have accomplished a great deal of work. The initial batch was seven projects plus added one, seven plus one. We have bid five of those. We are actively working and progressing toward a design, 100% design drawing to bid the remaining three, and that has been a big accomplishment. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium to our consultant, Hazen, and we have our staff from Public Works who also can be, will be able to address any question that might come up.
Very good, thank you, Abby.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Rob Taylor with Hazen and Sawyer. Good to see you again, and thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Phase Two neighborhoods, stormwater management improvements. This is a project that we've been working on, developing conceptual designs for the various neighborhoods, working on a conceptual permit that will address the approval for all of these neighborhoods. And we get to the point now where we are looking forward to the, moving into of the detailed design, the permitting, and the construction of this extensive work. And so we come to you today, really with an objective of meeting with you twice, today being the first. And as Abby mentioned, today we're all about discussing the methodology that we might use to rank and group. What you'll see will be a group of 12 projects addressing somewhere in the order of 17 neighborhoods. The idea is that we would come away from today with an agreement as to that methodology. We then would walk away and implement that methodology, come back to you with an initial ranking of those neighborhoods for your review, for your adjustment, comment, and ultimately approval for us to move forward with. Oops. The trigger is happy here. All right, so the first thing we want to talk about is just a brief update. Abby gave a little bit of one on the Phase One, Phase Two neighborhoods. We did start out the initial improvement, I'm not sure why, there we go. We did start out with seven initial neighborhoods. You can see those highlighted in the purple in the map. Through Phase One, in the middle of it, we decided that, the city did, that Melrose Manners and Riverland Civic Association should be added to that group, taking us to eight in Phase One. And then, as Abby mentioned, we had the, you know, the catastrophic storm of April 2023. That was preceded by some pretty extensive flooding in 2020 itself, and then followed up again with some more serious flooding in 2024. Okay.
You don't need to show the pictures, we all remember.
I'll continue on. So, so out of that came 17 additional neighborhoods. Originally, Phase Two was supposed to be seven neighborhoods. Starting in 2025, Fortify Lauderdale expanded and accelerated that to 17 neighborhoods. I think we probably leak into a few other neighborhoods now, so we're probably addressing a little over 17 neighborhoods. And, and here you can see them. Whether I'm going to get the, so let's talk about the 17 neighborhoods in Phase Two and our analysis of those and how that folds into the ordering and ranking. Okay, three main components of this analysis. First, I want to talk about flooding information that came from the neighborhood individuals themselves, together with information that the city had historically and data that we had from FEMA. We use that information along with flood modeling. The city has a comprehensive stormwater model. We've used that. We've updated boundary conditions for that model, and we've used. Phase Two. And then we use that information from the flood modeling in what we call a level of service analysis. This allows us to kind of gauge where, it's kind of a heat map, if you will, where is the most impact from flooding happening in the various neighborhoods that we're discussing? Next, please. And so this has got a lot of information on it. I share it simply to identify some of the information that we used in that neighborhood feedback section. The dots that you see, the red, yellow, blue, and green, that was all information that was gathered in a pretty comprehensive outreach program. We met with each of the 17 neighborhoods, and residents were able to go and identify areas where they knew flood problems happened for us. The little red Xs that you see, that's information that came to us via feedback from an online survey. So we gave everybody the opportunity to go in online and share their flooding issues, pictures, other information about the flooding with us. And then the red stars that you see are information that came from FEMA relative to repetitive loss properties within the various neighborhoods. Next, please.
Rob, before you move on, I'm sorry.
Sure.
With this map, this is only Middle River Terrace. Is there a map for other?
There is. This is just to give you an example of the data that we use, but there's a map like this for each of the 17 neighborhoods.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. So how did we use this flood information and data that we gathered? So we broke it into two sections. One was the information that we gathered from the city residents themselves, and we scored based upon the number of reports per acre. We did that so we had kind of a density of flooding impact, if you will. And then we normalized the score for each neighborhood by dividing that number by the largest number of reports per acre, so that we had some relativity between the various neighborhoods. So this would give every neighborhood a score somewhere between 0 and 1.0. We did the same thing with the FEMA data. We aggregated them, one point per repetitive loss. We divided that number for that project area by the. We divided that number for that uh project area by the largest number of repetitive losses in any one of the project areas to get a number between zero and one point oh. Next, please. For the flood modeling, we used multiple scenarios um in our planning and in our attempts to prioritize projects. Two primary storm events that we use, the ten-year twenty-four hour, that's been the aspirational goal of the city from the standpoint of roadway flooding. And uh as I think has been made uh apparent in almost every meeting, there are areas of the city where we just simply won't be able to meet that. We certainly will try to do our best, but there are some places where we're getting to that level of flood protection um won't be a possibility. And then for structure flooding.
So I I'm not to interrupt you, but sure. So the technology provides for accommodating rainfall of up to how many inches per twenty-four hour period? Because that's not clear here.
So that's the uh, that ten-year twenty-four hour event is eight point seven inches of rainfall.
What is ten-year twenty-four hours? I don't understand how the ten years.
So that uh, the ten-year refers to the statistical recurrence. That means that we would expect that storm event to happen once every ten years.
So we can expect an eight point seven inch rainfall within a twenty-four hour period, once every ten years?
Yes. Or the probability of that event happening in any given year of ten percent.
Okay, and what is, and what is our flood capacity at that point? What is our current, like, once we finish a project, once we finish a neighborhood, like River Oaks or uh or Edgewood? What what is the, what capacity have we uh installed in those neighborhoods aside aside from what this says?
So the vast majority of the neighborhoods will meet that requirement. But there will be certain limited locations within neighborhoods that are either just too low-lying. Uh the the cost of the infrastructure to be able to bring the water down to that level um of those low road roadways would be either impractical or or financially um too burdensome.
All right. So you're saying that that in the projects that we complete, we will be able to accommodate the ten-year type flooding?
With some.
With some variation, yeah, I understand. Because even in my own neighborhood, which is not considered flood prone, it still floods. But it goes away in two or three hours. Right. Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Just one quick question, if I may.
Sure.
Uh because I've been reading and hearing that we're doing uh ten inches. Why is it down to eight point seven?
So uh good, great question. So what we are doing in the the little footnote that's at the bottom talks about a twenty forty and a twenty seventy planning horizon as well. So we are looking at and with phase two are planning for what we call uh an accelerated rainfall or an exacerbated rainfall amount. The the numbers that were used in phase one and the numbers that we are using for current rainfall are these eight point seven and eighteen point five. Looking out, we expect that climate change will impact rainfall and that those rainfall amounts will be closer to that ten inches of rainfall that you're that you're speaking of. And so when we're planning the projects for the future, we are planning for those rainfall amounts. But as far as our assessment and ranking of the projects for right now, these are the current rainfall amounts that are on the docket.
So this is well within the ten-inch uh infrastructure that we have now been installing in these neighborhoods, correct?
This is. Remember, phase one, those are, those were the design numbers in phase one. Phase two, we are looking toward those higher numbers.
Well, you're, are you saying that in phase two, that we're going to be able to install pipes that are going to accommodate eighteen point five inches within a, within a seventy-two hour range? Well, I don't know. Is that really um, I don't, I'm not understanding this because seventy-two hours is three times twenty-four. So three times twenty-four is, if you, if three times eight point seven is twenty-eight inches.
So the rainfall, the 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 increase rates of the rainfall are somewhere on the order of like eighteen to twenty-two percent. So the hundred-year seventy-two hour number, the eighteen point five, multiply that for ease of math by one point two. That would be the number you're talking about. When you think about that hundred-year seventy-two hour rainfall, it it is not, that rainfall is not spread equally over the twenty-four hours or the seventy-two hours. The vast majority of that rainfall in the hundred-year seventy-two uh hour event happens in a twenty-four hour period about two days into the the storm event. So you have this kind of uh lighter rainfall that happens over the the antecedent portion of it. And then you have a very steep peak, very similar to the rainfall that would give you um the twenty-four hour amount. So it doesn't, it 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 doesn't come in equal parts, I guess, is the.
All right, but uh so I'm just trying to explain this to a homeowner, okay? And so uh I'm going to say that uh we're now evaluating the possibility of building in stormwater infrastructure that's going to accommodate uh eighteen point five inches of rain, okay? And you're saying that most of that seventy-two hour event is going to take place in the first twenty-four hours?
Not the first twenty-four, but in a twenty-four hour period in that seventy-two hour period.
Okay, so somewhere within the seventy-two hour period, there'll be twenty-four, uh there'll be a twenty-four hour period. And we're going to be able to accommodate eighteen point five inches?
And so one important thing to think about that, in the hundred-year event, what we're trying to protect are structures, buildings. We don't want water going into homes and businesses. So when you mentioned that we're going to create pipes that can carry away all of that rainfall, we're not going to do that. Think about it, much of that excess rainfall that can't be carried away by the pipes and the pumps is going to store. It's going to store in your streets, it's going to store in your yards. Think about a lot of little uh hills hitting above the the water level. That's kind of what happens in a hundred-year storm is that everything is flooded, you've stored that water, it's gonna be discharged over time.
Eventually, but I don't know what you're, these numbers are starting to not make sense to me and I'm trying to make sense out of them. So if you're telling me that with a twenty-four hour period of the seventy-two hour period, we're going to get eighteen point five inches, what does that number mean? How is it, how does that, how is, how is your planning for uh stormwater infrastructure related to what that number is? I understand the first number. I understand the eight point seven inches.
You're, you're going to get the vast majority of that eighteen point five inches in a twenty-four hour period of the seventy-two.
I get that.
So you're going to design your system based upon, some systems are what we would call a closed system without an outfall. There, you're going to have to store the whole eighteen and a half inches. But on those uh, on those events where we're counting on pipes, pumps, et cetera, to discharge and move water out. What we're really trying to do is take that rainfall that falls in that most intense period and figure out what is the flow rate associated with that volume? That flow rate is really what then we then, we then have to design for. How do we have a system, pipes, pumps, other conveyances, that can move so many cubit feet per second, so many acre feet per day? How do we move that much water in that most intense portion of the rainfall? That's the key. And what you're really doing is that that lead-up portion is basically saturating your soil column so that you don't have storage when that intense portion hits.
Okay. Do you want to add to that, Abby? You know what I'm asking?
One general thing is that when when the meteorology people refer to storm, that's the way how I would refer to it. It is pretty much a statistical bell curve saying that there's that much water is going to fall over seventy-two hours.
Right.
Case in point, what we had on April thirteenth, we had twenty-six inches that fell over a period less than twelve hours.
Right.
But the way Rob is mentioning is just the, we designed the system for the ability of that system to move a certain volume of water that is produced by that type of uh rainstorm, a hundred-year over seventy-two hour period. And and that, essentially that translated into a flow and that translated into a volume, that translated into designing a system of pipe and pump station to move that flow into uh a disposal water and body.
Okay, so I understand what you just said. Don't go away. So so the ten-year twenty-four hour rainstorm, okay, is going to uh drop eight point seven inches, okay? Within seventy-two hours, it could, it could drop twenty-seven inches. Tell me the difference between these two types of events.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Roberto Benecor. I'm the Stormwater Division Manager. Good afternoon.
Hi.
I I'm going to try a more simplistic explanation. Just imagine on a time period, you have three days. And just think of an exaggerated bell curve. So maybe the first day, very little rain. Then around the sixtieth hour, you have this large peak and that's where you get the most volume of the storm. So that's um, those come from the software IDF curves, essentially. Same thing with the ten-year twenty-four hours. It's just a little easier to understand twenty-four hours versus three days.
Well, because you just, you just, you just took a twenty-four hour rainfall and you spread it over three days. But you're then you're saying, well, it really isn't three days, it's just twenty-four hours. And it's somewhere within that seventy-two hours that the twenty-four hour rainfall will occur. And somehow we're going to get eighteen and a half inches in that twenty-four hours. And um uh and 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 I still haven't heard the answer on how we're going to accommodate the eight point, eighteen point five inches other than to say we're going to devise a mechanism with pump stations and and outfalls and every other aspect that's going to now be able to address eighteen and a half inches within a twenty-four hour period.
I thought, I thought it was eighteen and a half inches in a seventy-two hour.
It is. But they said, but then, I I know what it says here, but they just said it won't happen in twenty, in seventy-two hours. There'll be a bell curve where it'll all happen really within twenty-four hours of that seventy-two hours.
Think about, think about there being within the seventy-two hours, out of the eighteen and a half inches, I'm going to rough the numbers in. Let's say that fourteen or so inches of that rainfall falls in a twenty-four hour period.
Okay.
So what you're really, what you're really looking at in most systems in Fort Lauderdale, because we have a place to move the water to, is how do we move that fourteen inches of water in that twenty-four hour period? Considering the fact that some, somewhere in the order of three or four inches fell before that and that three or four inches saturated our our groundwater. So that fourteen inches, when it does fall a day or two into the storm event, it pretty much all becomes runoff. None of it is able to really soak into the ground. That's really the difference that we're talking about.
So the systems that we put in place already, can they accommodate the seventy-two hour storm as you now have described it?
They can.
They can?
They can.
Okay.
But they not, we're not, remember, we're not moving all that water. Some of that water is going to pond in your streets and your yards. Your house is going to be dry, but there is going to be a lot of inundation in that hundred-year storm event regardless.
All right, but but to answer Commissioner Glassman's question, is the, is the technology now designed to accommodate uh up to ten inches per twenty-four hour period?
In phase two, that is what we are designing for, to accommodate that that accelerated rainfall that we know won't be eight, eight point seven inches in a ten-year storm anymore. It's going to be over ten inches.
More than that.
So we're basically using very similar technology. We're just having to add a little more horsepower, a little more horsepower to it, if you will.
So right now, it's it's eight point seven inches for a twenty-four hour period?
That is.
Okay.
And it has not changed from a regulatory standpoint, but from a planning standpoint, knowing that we expect these impacts of climate change and that the systems that we're building, we expect to be uh of value to us out to the twenty forty and twenty seventy horizons. Planning for that level of rainfall is prudent.
Got it.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, please proceed.
Thanks. Uh next slide, please. All right. And then we, then we'll use that that uh, that modeling data that we come up with, the results of that, and we'll, we'll have a level of service analysis that we'll conduct for each of the neighborhood project areas. And that will give us a very comparable number so that we can, we can rate uh neighborhoods against one another as far as who's most impacted. This analysis considers the number of miles of roadway that are flooded within a neighborhood, considers the number of structures that we expect would be flooded in that neighborhood. It puts a premium on things like evacuation routes, very high-level uh use roads, uh critical facilities, repetitive loss facilities in the, in the determination of that level of service score. Next, please. And so much like we.
Hold on a second. Can you put the slides on our screens, please? Having technical difficulties here. Did someone pull the plug? They were all on up until C, up until the last, up until this one, it was. Before we, before we were seeing them there, up until this. Okay, you had it. Good. Okay, great. Thank you. Please proceed.
Next slide, please.
Okay, there we are.
All right, we're good?
Yep.
Everybody's got it? All right, good. All right, very similar to what we did with the neighborhood feedback scores. We're going to handle the level of service scores by aggregating the number of points um that are accumulated um for the structures and for the roadways. Again, the structure is based upon the number of structures flooded, the type of structure, the roadways, um the miles of inundation, the type of roadway inundated and the depth. Normalize it um by dividing by the uh project area that has the highest per acre point score. Again, everybody then will get a a score between zero and one point oh. Next slide, please. And so this is where we want to really kind of uh talk about the methodology for how we're going to take that information and use it in the prioritization. Next, please. With the intent um that at the end of this, we will come out with twelve projects that are placed into three time-based groups of projects. And the start dates of those groups of projects will vary from about fifteen to eighteen months with the overall idea of completing by twenty thirty-three. Next, please. And so there are an awful lot of factors that we could put into this uh process of prioritizing the order of work. Going to talk about neighborhood feedback. We want to use those in a numerical fashion, using those numbers that we just calculated. Then we show four uh what I'll call more subjective criteria um that we would like you all to to think about and how you might um finesse the ranking, if you want to, based upon them. Their spatial distribution of investment, are we spreading the work out appropriately across the expanse of the city? Hydrologic and hydraulic.
We wanted all done yesterday. So that answers that question.
Interactions hydrologically and hydraulically between neighborhoods, we want to try to make sure that we're having downstream projects done either before or concurrently with upstream projects. Cumulative impacts, we we don't want to overburden a given area by having too much construction going on in one location. Causes lots of issues for neighbors and traffic and so forth. And then within any of those three groups I showed, we don't want to be too heavily weighted with all of your most expensive projects in one group or all of your least expensive projects in one group. We'd like to kind of even that out over the decade that it's going to take to do this. Next, please. And so I think this is where uh we would, we would certainly like to get feedback from commission is in this numerical analysis piece. The, we talked about the level of service score and we talked about the neighborhood feedback score. Those two elements would go together to create an overall project score. We are, our our initial thought relative to that is that we would weight the level of service scoring effort a little more highly than what we weighted the neighborhood feedback score, largely because it's based on a set of uh consistent criteria using uniform events, but we also want to make sure that the the neighbors' voices, the residents' voices are heard. So our initial suggestion relative to that is that we would weight those seventy-five, twenty-five. Certainly glad to hear commission's um feedback on that. Next item? Next item?
I'm sorry, Rob, before you move forward.
Sure.
That feedback, um, if you can go back, the level of service and the neighborhood, um, feedback, um, regarding the neighborhoods, is that, um, I'm sorry, is it previous feedback or, um, future feed, um, feedback?
It's, it's, it's previous feedback. So we've been going through over the course of the last probably five, six months. We went to each of the neighborhoods. We had independent meetings with them and, uh, they have given us feedback, um, both in person and electronically over a survey. And so we've got that data collected and that's the information that we would use here in the scoring.
I have a concern, um, with that. Understanding the opportunity had been given for that type of feedback, but when we look at the demographics of the different communities, um, number of homes in that community versus how many people actually participated in the feedback, is that weighed in the score? Or are you just going like, um, say I have one neighborhood that has, um, 1,800 homes, right? And only 25 people showed up. And then you have a neighborhood that has 400 homes and 200 people showed up. How do you weigh that?
So we did not take that into consideration. What we did consider was the, the density. So we, we divided those scores, uh, or broke them into per acre, but we did not, um, apply a factor that incorporated the, the percentage of participation in the meeting. We could certainly, we, we could add a variable to that score to, uh, you know, to account for that. You know, all kinds of reasons why that participation might be different, right? But we could, we could certainly consider that.
Um, my concern is just getting a true snapshot of that feedback because, um, depending on the neighborhood demographics, you have people who do not attend meetings, do surveys for X, Y, Z reasons, if they're working, lack of internet, um, access, whatever the case may be. But they are complaining and they have feedback that just may not have reached the ears.
So I think two ways, and we're going to, we're going to show you another place for weighting factor where we, where we talk about weighting the neighbors' feedback versus the data we had from FEMA.
Okay.
Probably three ways we could kind of deal with that issue. One would be to add some kind of a factor that would account for the relative participation in the neighborhood. One would be simply to, let's lower the, the weight that we put on the neighborhood feedback, knowing that there are some variations in participation. And then the last would be, um, we're going to ask you to weight how you would do the neighbor feedback versus the FEMA information. And maybe we want to change and we want to put a little more heavy weight on the FEMA feedback because that is kind of tried and true. We know that's based upon some repetitive loss claim. So three ways that we might think about dealing with that.
Thank you.
Sure. Next slide, please. Okay. The next has to do within that level of service score. We talked about scoring for roadways and scoring for structures. Here, our initial thought was to weight these very similarly. Certainly more catastrophic if your home floods than if roadways flood. But from the other side of the coin, roadway flooding affects a far greater number of...
We're good, we're good.
It's there.
It's fixed.
Roadway flooding affects a far greater number of individuals than home flooding does. So there are, there are kind of two ways to look at that. Is it severity or is it, um, you know, the broadness of the impact? Again, would, would be glad to hear the, the commission's feedback and thought on that.
You know, I don't know if that's a fair analysis because roadway, okay, does affect more people, but not permanently.
Right.
Whereas structures, it's a permanent in, impact. You know, once the floods hit your living room and you're floating in your, you know, on your sofa, um, when the water does go away, the damage is done. So I, while more people do pass on roads than live in a house, the damage is not as permanent.
Right.
All right. Right?
So let's look at one last question and then we're going to come to all three of them and look at them kind of together. And this is where we'd like to get your feedback, you know, moving these numbers percentage-wise. Uh, next slide, please. And so then the last one, um, back to the, the question of participation in the neighborhood. Here, I, I think our initial thought was that we would put slightly more weight on the feedback from the, the residents, the neighbors. They're right there on the ground. They see it day in and day out. But the, the previous comment is a great one in that you don't know whether or not you've got this kind of uniformity of, uh, participation throughout the various neighborhoods. You know, so how do we want to stack that up compared to the information that we have from FEMA? Again, this is looking just at repetitive losses and not looking at other flooding that might happen within a neighborhood. So again, your thoughts relative to how we might weight the neighbors' feedback versus the FEMA data?
Well, the neighborhood feedback is going to be anecdotal. So it's going to be very subjective.
Very.
Right? Whereas FEMA is going to be statistical and objective. The level of service, you know, will be more scientifically addressed than just people saying, oh, my front porch was flooded.
Yep.
Right? So my opinion at least is that I think we should weigh more heavily with FEMA analysis than anecdotal evidence.
Okay. Next slide, please. All right. Once we've done that and we've, we've gone through and, and, and we'll get back to those percentages on our, on our last slide and talk about how we want to change them. But we want to think about some subjective criteria as well. The first of those, the hydrologic interactions, I talked about this. This one to me is a direct change. If we find that somehow the scoring has yielded that a, an upstream neighborhood, um, is more impacted than a downstream, we would want to flip those upstream. We don't want to do the, uh, upstream before we do the downstream. And then it, with the spatial distribution, the spreading of the work, the cumulative, uh, construction impacts and the spreading out of the construction costs, our suggestion is that you would only use those to move a project up or down one group. In that way, the most that you would be affecting the timing of that project would be on the order of 15 to 18 months. If you moved it to groups, now all of a sudden you might have changed somebody's timing by, by three years. And so, um, it feels like we could achieve, um, all the things that we would try to achieve here as far as the spread of the work, the construction impacts and the spreading of the construction costs by simply moving projects up or down one slot or, or one group, I'm sorry. And so, uh, next slide. And, uh, so let's talk about the, the weighting factors and then, uh, next slide, please. And so I guess this didn't get changed. Anyway, the, uh, the question, the, the model-driven score versus the neighborhood feedback score, 75, 25. Don't know what the commission's level of comfort is. That's the, that is the, that's the decision that will weigh the most, most heavily on the way the projects will rank. Uh, the other two will impact it, but not as much as this one does. So thoughts as to the appropriateness of that breakdown?
I mean, I, I think, Rob, thanks for your work. I mean, I think we're heading in the right direction. Um, as I look through this and think about it, probably I think one of the things that's going to be important is, um, getting your suggested, suggested, uh, racking and stacking. And then I think what's going to be important part of that is ensuring, you know, some degree of, um, kind of equality across the commission districts. And so ensuring that, um, that we're, um, treating each commission district as, as much as possible equally. So I think that's going to be part of the important piece of this, which might not be fully, um, you know, represented in a analytic model, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So I think that's going to be some of the discussion that we'll have when you bring forward your recommendations.
And, and that's the idea is right, is that we would bring them to you ranked analytically one to 12, the projects, and then you would be able to apply those subjective criteria to say, hey, if we move this project up one group, then we've got good balance across commission districts or...
So I think, and Mayor, I defer to you obviously, but you know, I think we could, each of us could share little nuances or pieces around here that we think may be just up or just down. But I think the more helpful piece is going to be you bringing it forward to us and that's all, then us being able to digest that, work with our neighborhoods and then come back and say, okay, here's where we'd like to move this up or down.
Do we want to make an adjustment that, I mean, Mayor had great points. Um, do we want to make some adjustments relative to the, particularly we talked about the, the FEMA repetitive loss and the city data collection? Does make sense, the, there's some standardness to the FEMA data collection that maybe there isn't in the, in the neighborhood data collection. Before we use this information to give you kind of that ordering of projects.
To me, this looks fine. To Commissioner Beasley Pittman's point, I think just inevitably there are going to be some of our neighborhoods in each of our districts that are not going to be as engaged or providing as much feedback as others might. And so I just, I, I like the quantitative analysis and approach on this and then allowing for the, um, you know, us collectively be able to, you know, um, adjust.
Yeah. And, and I think the move one group, one way or the other, will give you, I think you'll see that that gives you a lot of flexibility.
There wasn't any, um, highlight on communities that have, um, no stormwater, um...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure versus those who have that will be more of an improvement versus none. How does that weigh in?
So in that level of service scoring, if a neighborhood lacks infrastructure, that is going to manifest itself in the results of that flood modeling. And that's where you're going to see, you know, a differentiation between a neighborhood that doesn't have any infrastructure, one that maybe has inadequate infrastructure and one that, you know, infrastructure is not, not all terrible.
One of the things that I'd like to add, I mean, I'm, I'm fortunate that District One, uh, did not experience as much of the intense flooding as we saw throughout much of the city, and I'm grateful for that. But we do have some pockets that are experiencing some flooding. And one of the things that I think, uh, the, the, the modeling isn't showing, for example, is the changes that have occurred on Bayview as a result of the redundant sewer pipe work that we've done down. So we've had a lot more flooding along Bayview in the last two years than we've had in the last 10. And I think that's maybe not adequately reflected in the model. Um, I, I can also tell you, for example, that I've got substantial complaints outside of Sunrise Intercoastal, where we've got some new projects coming up. So we have little pockets, uh, as I think was mentioned, um, where we might not have entire neighborhoods that are under four feet of water, but I have certain pockets that flood on a consistent basis. And we just saw in the rain event we had last week where Commercial and Bayview, uh, Commercial was completely shut down. So again, I, I think the modeling is not capturing everything. Uh, certainly what we're experiencing more recently is not reflective of what we have experienced historically. I don't know, again, if that's changes in the roadway conditions. Certainly it's changes in the intensity of the rain that we're experiencing. We certainly understand that. But, um, but I do think we need some flexibility in here. Again, like I said, um, I, I recognize that other neighborhoods are certainly impacted to a greater extent than most of my neighborhoods are, but there are still areas that, that are experiencing flooding on a regular basis. It's impeding traffic. It's impeding ability for people to get to through their neighborhoods and to their houses. So let's make sure that, uh, that we're not leaving them behind. I noticed in District One, we've got Imperial Point in Phase Two, and we've got Point City Heights, but that's it. So I think, again, to that point about spreading this work out throughout the city, we need to take more of a holistic look at that. Thank you.
Yes. And, and I think we talked about Bayview the last time we got together on this subject. And so we have looked at places like that where a whole neighborhood is not affected, but there might be a, a piece of a neighborhood that might be, uh, might be combined with one of the other neighborhood projects and, and implemented in that fashion.
That was, um, a comment I wanted to make about, um, those adjoining areas. When we're looking at page seven, bullet number eight, it identifies Riverland Village and Shula Village and adjoining areas. I'm thinking, and I need to verify for my neighbors who are in that area, that would include, um, Sunset Community and then also, um... I'm sorry, I'm thinking Lauderdale West, but that doesn't sound right. But there's another community that's connected with this area. And for, um, point of clarity and also for those neighbors to feel like they are being recognized, could we identify them other than saying adjoining areas?
We could.
Please.
We could.
Please. Because, you know, that just looks like you are saying someone, but who? You're not identifying. And these are areas that are experiencing, um, this flooding, you know, tremendously as well.
And that's the thing is that, uh, you know, flooding, stormwater hydrology doesn't know neighborhood boundaries. We can, we can draw a nice line on a map, but it, it'll extend into adjoining neighborhoods. So we can identify those more specifically. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate the great work you're doing and to keep us, keep our heads above water.
Thank you very much.
Madam City Manager, are there any other madams for the, any other matters for this afternoon's, uh, conference meeting other than the closed door? That's it? Okay, so, um, let us continue with, uh, commissioner reports. Commissioner Vice Mayor?
So I have something I want to bring up on, uh, raised with me by one of the buildings in my district as it relates to their water bill. So they brought a complaint to my attention. Um, we got a corrected bill done, which I was appreciative of. But there's also a, what I think is a, a larger concern with this too. So when we look at our water rates on multifamily, it's tiered based on consumption, right? And so we've got a formula and, uh, and, and obviously the more water that gets consumed at, at a property, the higher the rates go up. So I want to make sure that I understand this properly. So if I've got a small building of 10 units and the formula is 1,000 times the number of units times 0.55, um, versus a building that may have 1,000 units, um, help me understand how that works, just in terms of pushing them into a tier, because it seems to me that that automatically means that a bigger building is going to be at a much higher tier pricing wise, even though the individuals may not be consuming any more water per unit, right?
So you're saying, you're saying the per capita rate goes up with the, with the
With the size of the building.
Right.
Right. Has nothing to do with how much each individual apartment is consuming. It simply says there's a lot more apartments in that building, so they consume more. Am I reading that properly?
Is that what happens?
So Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. So the rate structure, and actually we're in the process of doing the once every five year rate study currently. Um, but the way the rate structure is working for multifamily buildings, there's an equivalent residential unit factor that gets put on. So the tier, you know, the first tier is 0 to 3,000. For a 100 unit building, that would be, um, zero to, you know, multiply that out.
Right.
Um, so the, the first tier goes up that, by that number of units in the building. So they're, they're not at the same tier as a single family residential where the rate goes up at 3,000. There's something in the...
3,000 units or 3,000 gallons?
3,000 gallons is where the first tier ends. So there's a conversion based on the number of units that are in a building. So if there's 10 units, then that's 30,000 is where the second tier would start.
Okay, so, so as I'm looking at this, right, so tier one is 3,000 and as, as I'm looking at the number per, so it's 1,000 gallons per month times number of dwelling units times 0.55. So I just want to make sure that, that, that I'm understanding this, that I'm not misreading this. So you're saying that it doesn't matter how many units are in the building, everybody in a 100 unit building is paying the same for 3,000 gallons as a person in a 1,000 unit building?
Right, because of the conversion factor. And we'll get you some examples to just show you how that works.
Okay, because I'm, I'm reading the chart here and that's just not clear to me as I'm reading the chart. So I just want to make sure that...
But there's, there's a conversion for a factor based on ERs.
Well, I only see one number in here. That's the problem. I, I see but times 0.55. So I only see one conversion factor, so I don't know how that works.
Okay, yeah, and it's tied to number of units, but we'll get you some information on that.
Okay, yep. Like I said, I just want to make sure that we're charging, you know, large buildings uniform to what we charge small buildings. So that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, very good. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, given a commission report of, um, activities and events that, and meetings that I was able to attend since our last meeting, commission meeting, on Wednesday, April the 2nd, I had the pleasure of giving the welcome to over 4,500 participants, 180 corporations at the 2025 Lexus Corporate Run. Great event. The winning time was 17 minutes something, you guys. Somebody ran that 5K in 17 minutes. Wasn't me, but anyway. But I did want to share, it was a, a great opportunity to be out and representing our city. But what really, um, was a blessing to my heart, there was a gentleman that came up to me, his name was Josh, and he thanked the commission for our initiative, um, for what we're doing with the homeless task force. the homeless task force. He is a recipient of the services. He is now housed. He has employment. And he said, make sure you tell the commission, thank you, and that what we're doing, it is working, and it has worked for him. So that really resonated for me. It was just, I'm standing there, you know, you know, people always want to talk to you, especially when they know who you are, and you don't know who they are. But in that moment, it really, it really felt good to know that we are with our task force. It is sometimes perceived that we're not going in the right direction with it. But to hear that testimony from one of our neighbors who said that this has improved the quality of his life. So thank you to our homeless task force, Chris Cooper and the team. Great job. Let us continue doing what we're doing. And I believe, and I'm witnessing that, what we're doing is in a form of compassion and being compliant with what has been put in place by the governor. So thank you. Thank you with that. I had I had to share that. So good job. Also, on Thursday, April the 3rd, Smitty's Restaurant Owner, Chris Smith, host a wonderful meet and greet for our new city manager, Raquel Williams. Well attended. We had neighbors from all over the district. We had some stakeholders as well. And everyone had great conversation with Raquel. And I want to take this moment again to tell you welcome. And we look forward to great opportunity, stellar achievements, and iconic, that's our mayor's favorite word, iconic ventures. So we look forward to working with you. And that was that was a great event. Okay. Also, on April 9th, I had my quarterly civic association president's meeting. Had a great meeting with those presidents that came out. We discussed issues that are concerning them. Then also preparing them to think about hurricane season, encouraging our neighbors to be a part of the CERT training, and telling them how important it is. When I came into this position, I learned more about CERT. I did know a little about it. But I learned out, I learned that from District Three, it is something that we really need to be hands on. So I'm pushing that initiative with my neighbors, inviting them to be a part. We can't necessarily be spectators doing the watch, you know, everything that's going to happen. We want to be prepared. So that was one of the conversations we had with our neighbors, as well as talking about some cybersecurity for our neighbors as well. So that was a great meeting. Also, on Saturday, April the 12th, we had a front porch roll call. I want to thank the Rock Island community, Rock Island Civic Association. It was led by their president, Mad King. It was host at the home of Juliet Grey Williams. And our law enforcement was there. Want to thank our chief, and also all those in Police District Two for coming out, engaging the neighbors, putting faces to names and names to faces. Great opportunity to connect and bridge a gap between neighbors and law enforcement. Really a great idea. This is not the first time I've shared that we're doing this in District Three. We're going to continue to do it. Also, we are inviting neighbors to be with us as we do walking talks with our police as well, identifying a block in a community, walking and talking with our officers, and inviting the neighbors to come out as well. So we will continue that.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is cool. And it's a great interaction. And you get a lot of people to come out with the roll calls. It generates interest, too, because they see all the cars in front of someone's house. Unfortunately, they think something has gone wrong. But they still come out to find out what's going on, and they agree that it's a good opportunity to meet our officers. So that's also a great opportunity. I also want to give a shout out. We have a neighbor. Her name is Avis Robinson. She's helping our neighbors coordinate with police to coordinate this. And she attended one of these events, and she said she wanted to be a part of the process. So thank you, Avis, for what you're doing. It is truly making a great impact for what we're doing in our communities. I feel like I'm forgetting something. But I'm going to wrap up there. And Mayor, thank you for this time. And we'll keep doing what we're doing, making those contacts, and being a voice for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, last week, Wednesday, April 2nd, I wanted to thank the Birch Finger Street Association for their annual meeting, and it was a pleasure speaking with them. Saturday, April 5th, it was really a great weekend in town. And I was so pleased to be able to attend over at Bonnet House for their Orchid Festival. Great turnout. Tuesday, April 8th, I had the pleasure of addressing the Fort Lauderdale Council of Civic Associations. And I wanted to thank the board for that invitation as well, and to congratulate Bill Brown, the new president of the council, and to thank Mary Pelican for her amazing service in the past year as the president as well. On Wednesday, April 9th, again, I returned over to Bonnet House and participated in a discussion about development and redevelopment on the Barrier Island. It was a great panel discussion. We also highlighted the importance of projects such as Bungalow East, small projects, small numbers, small boutique projects, to keep that balance on the Barrier Island between larger structures, smaller structures, midsize structures, and also the preservation of historic structures. So that was a really great turnout. We had about, I'd say, almost 100 real estate professionals there that for that panel discussion on the 9th. This past Saturday, the holiday of Passover began. And I want to wish everyone that celebrates Passover a very good holiday that runs through this weekend, and also this Sunday as well, to those who celebrate Easter, a very happy and joyous Easter holiday to you as well. Coming up tomorrow evening, we will do a ribbon cutting for the Northeast 12th Street Extension. It's a great project in Middle River Terrace. Really took an area that was totally desolate, and now we have a street there. So that's great for the neighborhood, and also the district and the city as well. That will be tomorrow evening for the ribbon cutting for that street extension. Thursday, I will have the pleasure of addressing the Central Beach Alliance Neighborhood Association. Always a great turnout. I am always amazed at the number of people that show up at that neighborhood association. Typically, between 75 and 100 residents show up at every monthly meeting.
Which neighborhood is this?
Central Beach Alliance. Always very well attended. Tuesday, April 29th.
Is that the one with the open bar? No, no, sorry.
That's funny, man. We could never do that. Tuesday, April 29th, for those of you that have not been in the area by the La Solis Bridge to see the progress on the La Solis Marina, it's really looking terrific. And I wanted to thank everyone who's been involved in that project. We did a lot of infrastructure work. We did pump station, traffic, different ways to ingress and egress around that circle. We took a huge swatch of asphalt and replaced it with just water. We dredged all of that. We have 84 mega slips there, mega yacht slips there. It was partially ready to go for the boat show. But now it's really getting there. You can really see the difference. Landscaping is coming together, promenades and walkways. And on April 29th, we will have a ribbon cutting for the main attraction in that marina, besides the 84 mega yachts. But Ocean Prime Restaurant, which is a very well known restaurant nationwide, will be coming to Fort Lauderdale. It's looking great.
April 29th, you said?
April 29th is the ribbon cutting for Ocean Prime Restaurant at the La Solis Marina. So very much looking forward to that as well.
I guess my invitation got a little, oh, no, four, was it 3:30 or 4 o'clock?
I, you know, I don't want to, I just know it's that day, but it must be somewhere around that time. It's four, it's 3 o'clock? 3 o'clock, Mayor.
3 o'clock?
3 o'clock on April 29th. We'll do the ribbon cutting.
Got it.
For Ocean Prime. And I did want to take a moment. I know that Commissioner Sorenson has already requested an expression of sympathy for Gina Ellis's husband, Dick. And hopefully, Mayor, you can mention that tonight as well for our moment of silence. That's about it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a good couple of weeks. Spoke at Beverly Heights Civic Association. Also welcomed home Honor Flight. And those of you might not be familiar with Honor Flight, nonprofit organization, flies veterans from Fort Lauderdale area up to DC, a day of touring the memorials, monuments in DC, flies those veterans back free of cost. So if you know a veteran, and they focus on Korea War era, even Cold War era, and obviously, World War II, any veterans, Honor Flight, great organization. I'm going to be going on it next month with my aunt, who's a veteran from the Waves, which is part of the Navy. So that was just really, really powerful, welcoming them all home. After that, I got to meet with Broward Film Commissioner Sandy Lighterman, which was great, just to get an update on some of the film projects. And Mayor, you may already know this, but I just want to share just some of the film activity that happens in Fort Lauderdale, even just in 2025 so far. MIA, which is streaming on Peacock, that's being filmed here. Wildlife Nation with Jeff Corwin, Love and Hip Hop Miami, House Hunters, 90 Day Fiance, Happily Ever After. Mayor, I know you might be tuning into that one. Interesting one. Airbnb One Love is a reality dating series. Then commercials, we have McDonald's, we have Dick's Sporting Goods, City Furniture, Porsche, Home Depot, AT&amp;T. So these are just some of the film activities that happen in our city because it's such a wonderful place. And Daphne, just a question, you don't have to answer this, but just a question as we think about incentives for film industry in, you know, in the state, just as you're spending time in Tallahassee, just an idea to continue to explore that possibility. I don't know if you have, like, any updates or thoughts on that. But it's great what we're doing in Fort Lauderdale, Mayor, in partnership with the county.
Commissioner, there was two bills, there were two bills filed for film incentives. However, they didn't move.
Okay.
They file them every year. We monitor them. We try to push them in order to do it. The state does believe that the state basically markets itself with its beaches and and the lifestyle that we live in Fort, you know, Fort Lauderdale, but in Florida as a whole. But what we'll do is we'll try next year, in the next session, to get those bills moving.
Yep. Okay, great. Because I think it's great economic development pieces. So, okay, cool.
If I could just add, Commissioner?
Sure, yeah.
So one of the things we'll be looking at over the next couple of weeks is how we can implement an application process with perhaps a nominal fee that would be attached to film permits. So right now, the permit goes through Broward County. There's a sign off that we do here in the city. But this could be an opportunity to generate some revenue without disincentivizing film in Fort Lauderdale, but just trying to tap into that as a revenue source.
Yep. Okay, yeah. Anything I can do to support that, I just think it's very positive. Yeah.
And Commissioner, just to your point, I agree with you 100%. We used to have a robust state incentive program.
That's right, I thought.
We did really well with that. When that was removed, we did lose a lot of business to states like Georgia, other neighboring states. But it is a shame. I, that was just a decision that was made at the state level, where all those incentives just went away.
Right. Yeah. Okay, great. Went to Community Court, which again, is every Wednesday. See the great work that our city and service providers are doing. And Judge Barner, if you haven't seen Judge Barner in action at Community Court, serving those who are in need, you haven't lived. So go Wednesday morning. It's amazing to see the service and compassion that's happening there. So that was great. We had our two year flood remembrance. Edgewood Neighborhood does this every year. And so I was there the past weekend for that, which was really moving. And and I affirmed to them the great work that we have planned to continue stormwater investment across the city. Then.
How did that neighborhood fare when they had, we had the rain last week?
Yeah, it much better than in the past, Mayor. So much better. And the, you know, the lift station being able to clear 60,000 gallons of water a minute is making a difference. And so, you know, I think more work to always do, but definitely improved. Yeah. Let's see. Ben Rogers had a question, wanted to talk Park Bond for a moment. So Mayor, one of our District Four specific park initiatives has been using some of District Four dollars for the purchase of land, instead of using it to purchase land to invest in a community center at Lauderdale Isles. And so we've got some funding we're kind of looking at around that. So Ben, yeah, if you want to give whatever, if you want to give anything about Park Bond generally, or just Lauderdale Isles, but I want to talk through that. Thanks.
Okay. So for, good afternoon, Ben Rogers, Acting Assistant City Manager. For Lauderdale Isles, there was a request from the neighborhood to have a larger space than what the budget allowed. And so we put together a couple of different alternatives. The staff and the neighborhood have been working on it. And there's really, from the neighborhood perspective, a need to have the bigger building, to make sure that it can fit the 80 plus people in there, and still accommodate the social setting and the things you need for the meetings. And so as we looked at those costs, we identified that there was short funded, I think about $500,000 for that project. And so we were trying to figure out different ways that we could fund it. And one of the things that we identified was that the District Four Signature Park, Tunnel Top Park, has been completed. But due to the resolution the commission passed last fall, there was a reappropriation of park impact fees to Tunnel Top Park. And so I think the conversation that we had, or what we wanted to further discuss, was how are you going to use those dollars since Tunnel Top is done? And if there's a way that your park impact fees could go to support other parks?
Got it. Like, yeah. And you and I talked about how those District Four impact, park impact fees could be used to support other District Four parks. Just that, I don't know what that dollar amount, it's like 1 million?
1.6 million.
1.6 million.
Is the dollar figure.
And is that, is that 1.6 million, is that District Four impact fees? And is, does each district have the same amount? Or does it, I think it varies by district, depending on the impact fees they received in that district, or what's?
So if we take a step back before we get too far down, the Parks Bond conversation, outside of the Parks Bond conversation, there was a discussion that the commission had last fall that talked about how they're going to use park impact fees moving forward. And moving forward, there was a plan that had a formula that a certain percentage would go to parks of regional significance, and a portion would go to the district that the park impact fee was collected in.
Yep.
At that time, there was a balance that was on the books for park impact fees. And the decision at that time was to reallocate the dollars that were already on the books to signature parks.
Yep.
So right now, the funding for District One, Two, and Three are all allocated to the signature parks that are still have active construction or active ongoing efforts.
Yep.
And District Four, that 1.6 million is allocated to Tunnel Top Park.
Right.
But it is already completed.
Okay.
I know we've talked about doing some shade enhancements and some landscaping enhancements, but I don't think those enhancements at Tunnel Top would be to the magnitude of 1.6 million dollars.
Got it.
So as you were seeking additional funding sources, that was one of staff's ideas or recommendations, was how you could utilize those park impact fees outside of your signature park, since your signature park has been completed.
Okay, great. Thank you. That gives me clarity. So Mayor, that's what I'd like to just seek support for, is to use District Four impact fees for parks in District Four other than the signature park in District Four, so I can close the gap on this.
Makes a lot of sense. I agree. We need 1.6 million to put daffodils on Tunnel Top, so.
Yeah, well, we can do Tunnel Top. We'll be able to use Tunnel Top and Lauderdale Community Center with that. So do we need?
Lauderdale Isles.
Lauderdale Isles Community Center, yeah. And just one other mention on that, just to get in the weeds for a minute, but I'll, so Lauderdale Isles Community Center needs a lift station because there's going to be bathrooms in this community center. The lift station is going to cost around 500, 700,000, I think. And so the neighborhood asked, hey, is there any way it can just be gravitational, and we don't need a lift station, thus saving that money? And so Ben did an analysis with the, you know, other city leaders. And they do need the lift station to, due to the incline and so forth, and elevation of the community center. So anyway, as a result of that larger cost, we have to close the gap. And so that's the reason in part. to close the gap. And so that's the reason in part for this. So Ben, do we need, what do we need to allow for that to happen, for that, those dollars we use for that?
I think today, it's just the consensus of the Commission to move forward with that adjustment. I'll need to work with the City Attorney's Office, probably the Office of Management and Budget, who was involved in that original movement of money.
Okay.
And come back to you at a future meeting with some kind of action.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you. Is that good, Mayor? Okay. Anything else, Ben?
And just for clarity, that is the impact fees that were designated for District Four that you're referring to.
Correct. Exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner, yep. Okay. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Mayor, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, great. Just a few things. I want to first of all thank our firefighters and our police department for their heroic efforts in keeping the community safe and friendly during the Tortuga Music Festival. I think we've heard nothing but great things about the event, as well as how the city responded and was able to, we had a couple of complaints in Harbor Beach because of traffic, but other than that, you know, it's, my hat's off to all of you for the great work that you did in keeping that festival the great festival that it is. Also, let's see, a lot of visitors this past couple of weeks, different countries, different, Imperial Point had their spring fling last Saturday, over 300 people were in attendance. It was really a great, a great event. And I had my picture taken with Dottie Mancini, with the Easter Bunny. So she's still happy and kicking. And we're very pleased that we were able to come to an agreement in the reopening of that park. Again, thank you, Susan Grand, for all the efforts that you made to make that happen, and the Commission for agreeing to the terms with Broward Health going forward on that. Let's see, a lot of different events. Well, I think the most important thing, the next week, we're going to be welcoming the United States Navy. Fleet Week will be in town. And so there are quite a few Navy events, so please speak with the city manager. She'll be able to tell you all the different events, but here's a couple. There's April 25th at the Lauderdale Yacht Club at 8:00 AM. There's, there's an event. There's a gala on April 25th, that same evening aboard the USS New York. So please keep that in mind. I failed to mention, two days before that, April 23rd is a Fleet Week welcome event at 5:30 at Baptist Health Iceplex. Let's see, let's see, April 26th, that Saturday night, there's the United Way Broward County Mayor's Gala. It's not just for mayors anymore. It's for everybody to attend. All the commissioners are certainly invited to attend. Are we, did we buy a table to that event? We did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we need to populate that table. If anyone wishes to come, please contact the city manager. But most importantly of all of this is May 1st, Riverwalk is paying tribute to four very, very important people in this community. Ed Smoker, excuse me, I'm talking. Ed Smoker, Melissa Milroy, Lisa Lutov Perlow, and yours truly will all be honored by Riverwalk. And I ask you all to please attend. It's really a great honor to be recognized by the Riverwalk community, and I appreciate the recognition.
City Manager, do we buy a table for that?
I'll have to double check.
Okay, thank you.
Then, of course, May 3rd and 4th is the Fort Lauderdale Air Show. It's going to be another stellar event, another free opportunity for people in our, in our area to participate and see all the latest and greatest fighting machines that we have here in our, in our country. There are a few issues I'd like to bring up if I could. First of all, we need to have a conversation, Dwayne, about where we're moving with regard to the one-stop-shop and the arts park organization. Maybe, Raquel, we can bring that up at a conference meeting to see if, if, Dwayne, if you can please get back to us with a report on whether or not they have met various milestones. And if not, then we need to terminate that agreement. And the Commission needs to have further discussions on what to do with that. Real estate. Hammershy, there, I received a letter, I think you all got a copy of that letter, from Ty Sutton of the Broward Center, Joe Cox of the Museum of Discovery and Science, and Jenny Morhohn of the Downtown Development Authority, who have written to us, asking us to have a conversation over the alcohol beverage serving hours on Hammershy Street. They think it's time to take away the extended hours and to reimagine what Hammershy Street can be for the community. We all know that we, we gave them that special license to try to increase economic development on that street. I think we've succeeded, but it's actually becoming a nuisance. And there's, there are a lot of complaints we're having with late-night trouble on that street. And if we're going to think about having more residential coming to that area. Finally, I received an invitation by the organizers of an event. It's called M Israel High. It's a symphonic music night. It's in celebration of Israel's 77th anniversary. It's created and led by renowned conductor Angel Mahler, and it's May 21st, Wednesday at 8:00 PM at the Broward Center. We are being asked to be a sponsor of this event. They didn't ask for a monetary contribution. They just asked for name recognition. But I couldn't really do that on my own. I thought I needed to bring that to the attention of the Commission and see whether or not we wanted to participate in this event. Again, it's a celebration of Israel's 77th anniversary, and it's a special concert being put on by this organization. Any comments or suggestions?
Is it just, is it a sponsorship, like in name?
In name.
In name, yeah. Sounds, sounds great.
This was presented to me by the, I received a visit by a city commissioner from Aventura who came and brought it to my attention.
Yeah, sounds great to me.
Okay. All right. Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Yes, I agree.
All right. So, so I'll have my office get back to them and let them know that we can lend our name to that celebration. And that's it for me. Madam City Manager, any reports?
Sure. So later this week, our police department will be convening a after-action meeting related to spring break. So it'll include the outside agencies that participated, as well as staff in multiple departments. So we'll be coming to you, providing the result of that after-action, where we're going to touch on the highlights of spring break, as well as any lessons learned. Also, staff is currently working on plans for rainy season and hurricane season. At our May 6 meeting, we'll express in more detail all the things that we're going to be doing related to hurricane season, any events, activations, communications. You're going to see an enhanced level of service as it relates to how we roll out our communications to the community, as well as how we distribute sandbags. I also want to take the opportunity to recognize Al Battle, our acting DSD Director, as well as Ms. Tamika McKay. This will be their last meeting. Tamika actually is in Tallahassee, receiving an award. But we have great people, Angela Marinus, as well as Portia Garcia, who will be stepping up in an acting capacity to lead those two departments. So I just wanted to give a round of applause and acknowledgement to those two individuals. Lastly, there will be a walk-on item for the evening meeting related to the Florida Panthers' advancement to the playoffs. I will be seeking authority to potentially enter into a cosponsorship agreement to allow for banners highlighting the Panthers to be placed on poles within the city. And so just look out for that item to be walked on later. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Dwayne, any, any report?
No, sir.
You have none. Okay. That's it for the conference meeting. That meeting is now concluded. We might now want to go into our CRA board meeting. And we'll begin that, I'm sorry? You want to take a break?
No, I was just stating in terms of the conference meeting that you'll break it until after the CRA, so that we can convene, to convene the closed door at 4:30.
Right, it's only 3 o'clock.
No, I understand.
Yeah. So we'll, so when we get, when we conclude the CRA board meeting, I will announce the closed-door session at 4:30.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Herbst?
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Chair Trentales?
Here. Moving on to, hold on, let me get to the agenda. Moving on to the CRA agenda, we have M1, a motion approving the minutes for the April 1st, 2025 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved. Seconded.
Do I hear, okay, moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentales?
Yes. And M1 is now approved. Moving on to R1, resolution approving a CRA funding in the amount of $500,000 to subsidize the lateral sewer connections. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving funding in the amount of $500,000 for infrastructure improvements for affordable infill housing in the city of Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Area, authorizing the Executive Director to execute any and all related instruments, delegating authority to the Executive Director to take certain actions, providing for effective date. Vice Chair Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentales?
Yes. And R1 is now approved. What is this? Well, thank you for handing these to me. R2, resolution adopting a policy for the issuance of a satisfaction of mortgages, full and partial releases, releases of restrictive covenants, and other instruments in the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area and the Central City Community Redevelopment Area, and authorizing the Executive Director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the Executive Director to take certain actions. Anyone have any questions regarding this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency adopting a policy for the issuance of satisfaction of mortgages, full and partial releases, releases of restrictive covenants, and other instruments for the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area and Central City Community Redevelopment Area, delegating authority to the Executive Director to execute such instruments and take certain actions, providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentales?
Yes. And R2 is now approved. Moving on to public hearing, PH1. This is a public hearing, accepting the development proposal of the Central County Community Redevo, excuse me, the Central County Community Development Corporation in partnership with Elavos Impact Capital LLC and Broward County Minority Business, excuse me, Minority Builders Coalition, Inc., and approving the sale of community redevelopment agency property located at 660 Northwest 22nd Road, 708 712 and 716 Northwest 22nd Road, 744 Northwest 22nd Road, 800 Northwest 22nd Road, and 808 Northwest 24th Avenue, and authorizing the Executive Director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the Executive Director to take certain actions. Now, several people have signed up to speak, but I assume is in support of this measure, correct? Anyone here to speak against the measure? Okay. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none. We'll let it go, right? Okay.
Raquel, you look like you want to say something.
I just didn't realize so many people were behind me.
Yeah, they got a crowd. It's great.
I'd like to hear a motion to close public hearing.
Moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll. I'm moving to close public hearing.
Vice Chair Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes, but I'm going to take a moment. I got to expound on this. This is a great opportunity. I am truly excited for this legacy village. I'm owning this project. I'm owning it as a vision that I believe in and that I also had conversation and pushed forward. So I'm really excited for the collaborations from the families and friends, the families being the Scurries and the Mizel fam, excuse me, the Shirley family, that is being a part of this opportunity to transform this quarter, this 22nd, Northwest 22nd Road and 24th Avenue. I am looking forward, as well as the community, for a positive impact that's going to change this area for the next 50 to 70 years. With all that being said, and much more, I can say, yes!
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentales?
Yes. And public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to, what is this? Is this a motion, or?
It's a resolution.
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 Okay, it doesn't really say the word resolution, but will, if someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
The resolution has been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, accepting the proposal of Central County Community Development Corporation approving the sale for nominal value of real property located 660 Northwest 22nd Road, 708 Northwest 22nd Road, 712 Northwest 22nd Road, 716 Northwest 22nd Road, 744 Northwest 22nd Road, 800 Northwest 22nd Road, and 808 Northwest 24th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33311. Subject to conditions, approving the commercial contract and addendum, delegating authority to the Executive Director to execute the commercial contract, addendum, conveyance, instruments, and related documents, delegating authority to the Executive Director to take certain actions, and providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentales?
Yes. And that resolution is now approved. Congratulations. Thank you for coming here. We hope to see great things happen. Is there any further business of the CRA board? There being none, that meeting's now concluded. And we will resume, where do you want to resume? Here or in the, in the downstairs?
We have to resume here, so that you can announce the closed door.
I'll announce it here, but we'll retire to the, to the.
That's correct.
Okay.
What time is that, Mayor?
4:30.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to announce the executive closed-door session this April 15, 2025, which has been scheduled for 4:30 p.m. At the public meeting and before the commencement of the closed-door session, I'm announcing that the City Commission shall meet privately to conduct discussions between the city manager, the city attorney, and the city commission relative to pending litigation pursuant to Section 286.011 (8) Florida statutes in connection with the following two matters: Trayman Landers versus the City of Fort Lauderdale, case number CACE23005565, and in the 09 division; and the second one is the City of Fort Lauderdale et al. versus Terminal Ventures LLC et al., case number CACE22-011787, p. 05. Present at the attorney-client session will be myself, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Vice Mayor Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Pamela Beasley Pittman, Commissioner Ben Sorenson, City Manager Raquel Williams, interim City Attorney Dwayne M. Spence, Assistant City Attorney Robert N. Oldershaw, Assistant City Attorney Lynn Solomon, outside counsel Tamatha Alvarez Lister and Alvarez on the matter of Trayman Landers, and outside counsel Valerie Vince Vicente Esquire from Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson on the matter of City of Fort Lauderdale versus Terminal Ventures. Certified court reporter from Bailey Enton, court reporting will be in attendance, and the estimated length of this session will be approximately one hour. Let us now retire to the Einstein Room where we'll have the closed-door session.
Thank you.
I gotta end the closed-door session. Thank you.